Good evening. Welcome to the May 16th, 2022, meeting of the Dover School Committee. My name is Sarah Gutierrez Dunn, and I call this meeting to order at 6:37 PM. We are pleased to hold this open meeting in person this evening at Chickering, and we are also recording the meeting and live streaming, I believe, with DSC TV for those who wish to view remotely. First on our agenda this evening is community comments. And we provided the Zoom link for those who wish to make a comment, but for whom it's not possible or prefer to attend in person. But it sounds like, Deb, there's nobody in the Zoom. Any community comments here? All right. I will skip over the community comment preamble in that case, and we will move right to our reports. So I will turn it over to Kathleen Smith for the superintendent report. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have to stop this evening by talking about, again, our heartfelt sympathy to the city of Buffalo and the senseless loss of lives. And I say that to everybody today. We received some information from our local superintendent association and other places about resources that we shared with the principals, you know, for allowing that discussion. But more importantly, what I have to say when I think about Dover and Sherburne is this is something that you have started a number of years ago under Dr. Keough with DSA that your new superintendent coming on board has been leading the efforts this year. You've brought community members to talk about. It's a senseless that we continue to do this. I struggle today with sending a community message out to everybody because it continues to happen again and again. But again, we are here to support our children, to allow them to have dialogue that is age appropriate and to really make sense of something that, at my age, I cannot make sense of. So again, heartfelt sympathy, thinking, again, I can just imagine the students attending school in the city of Buffalo and students throughout our nation. So again, next, I do want to mention that the surveys have gone out to all families on communication. I think there are maybe 10, 11 questions on the survey. We spent time looking at the survey, certainly appreciating the time and efforts that our community will put into this because it allows your new administration coming forward. There are so many ways to communicate. And we want to understand. We're excited that tomorrow we're meeting about our website and talking about moving that forward and updating it, continually talking about not overloading families. But your principals do a great job with newsletters. I know your teachers, again, are communicating with families. And some families have a number of children in the district. So again, we're trying to find a balance. This will really help us in going forward. So please take a look. I don't think it takes very long to fill in that survey and give us your comments. And I want to start, first of all, and I'll get to COVID. I'm sure, I think, with the uptick and things that we're dealing with. But let me first start with, this month, we started out with what we call Teacher Appreciation Week, and that was the week of May 2nd through 6th. Just last week, we had Nurses Appreciation Day on the 11th. And the one thing I said at the region meeting last week is, looking at the challenges that we continue to face, I have found, in the district I was in previously, looking at the struggles, that made to me is all about thanking so many people that have gotten us through, you know, another really challenging year, you know, whether it's the custodians, whether it's our food service workers, you know, certainly our teachers, our support staff, our administrative team, our school committee members. I could go on and on with the people to thank. And I'm hoping at the end of the month to send out a giant thank you, you know, to everybody for what they have done getting us very close to our graduating seniors, which will happen on June 2nd. So again, with Nurses Appreciation Day, because I can actually name them, I would like to thank first Jill Fedor, who was our nurse leader and nurse at Pine Hill, Janet, Margaret, Stephanie here at Chickering, and Amy, who came on and was a godsend, you know, to the district in supporting us as like everybody else. You know, sometimes our nurses went down. Didn't take very long before they were back up and going, but they were just instrumental, you know, certainly, in getting us through this year. So that is my plan. Now, talking about COVID. So I have learned, I can remember a year ago, being so excited when the governor lifted the state of emergency right at the end of May, right around Memorial Day. All of a sudden, graduations were back on. It felt like for a month or so, we were given a little bit of space to feel like we were back to normal. And unfortunately, what we have learned is this just is not right now going away. And we're really doing a good job of learning to deal with it. And fortunately, and I do have to say this to families and community, again, vaccinations are out there. Boosters are now available for those that have been vaccinated, I think, age 12 and older. We have our five-year-olds to 12-year-olds being able to be vaccinated. Unfortunately, for our very little ones, I think they're getting closer and closer, but we're not there yet. So we continue to try to encourage everything that you can do. Our masks, again, and we are right now a district that is mask optional. We talk about a community of respect, and that is exactly what it has been since we lifted the mask mandate, I believe, on March 8th. That hasn't been without, again, some consequences, meaning, you know, it doesn't matter if you're going to the supermarket. Dawn was actually commenting today. We are starting to see more people wearing them. People understand the uptick that we're dealing with. People are not getting as ill as we've seen previously, although I say that as the flags are flying half-staff, you know, because of, you know, over a million COVID victims. So, you know, we understand all that. We're actually meeting again. So we met weekly with our Board of Health for both Dover and Sherburne every week. And they guided us. They gave us advice. We had conversations of how best to balance and keep our schools safe, our schools, again, in school every day for in-person learning. And we have done that. We have done those things. I talked to Principal John Smith today. I'll be meeting with all of the principals to talk again about things that we can do. And I'm just going to give you a, for instance. And Principal Smith will be sending this out, you know, to, you know, his parents. And what I'm saying is there are some things. For instance, there are senior projects, and we're looking at a way to do that, like Screencastify, where we can put that on a type of virtual opportunity for the kids to present and be judged, et cetera. But there are other things that people are looking forward to. We have a senior night, so we're talking about the possibility of having that outdoors. I know weather is something we would have to look at. So we're trying, we talked about pivot. That was absolutely the word we used. And we're looking to do that in order to, you know, try to make sure that our seniors and our families are able to enjoy those very special moments. So we held our prom. The other night, we held our boat cruise. So, you know, again, is it without consequences? Well, you know, I can read you some of the numbers. So I'm watching the numbers very carefully. But we have a number of staff, a number of students. I don't think we're at a tipping point, but we are at a point of having some discussions. So families, you know, you're obviously making your own decisions, whether it's your risk factors. We're talking, again, about making sure cafeteria windows are open, doors are open. You saw the kind of day today, kind of a humid, warm day. I know there's been discussion about lunches and eating outside. So we're doing our best to encourage time outside. Again, when we're talking about eating lunches, you know, supervision. When I tell you there are staff members, again, that we're trying to, you know, support, and there are very few substitutes available. But this district has done an excellent job with your educational assistance jumping in, support staff jumping in, you know, trying to cover, but supervision is important. The safety of our students, obviously, is important, and the health of our students and staff is important. So please understand and bear with us. You've been such great supporters, but this is, you know, pretty much where we're at going forward. We did have a meeting with the commissioner about a week ago, and he warned us, and again, I'm not sure where their experts come from, but they're already talking. And again, our, Dawn has done an excellent job of making sure we have money set aside as we start the next year, July 1st, for masks, for tests. We don't know if we'll be able to get them as we have in the past. I'm hopeful, but we've made sure that we certainly have those type of things for our districts. They also made a decision with accountability. If you have 180 school days, if a student is out more than 10%, so you're talking 18 days, then there is a hit on your accountability as a district. It's nothing that, we want our students in school. We want to be able to support our students and our families to obviously attend school as many days as we can. We know how important that is. But what they have done because of the year that we have faced as we march, here we are right now in the middle of MCAS, while I'm telling you again, and we're juggling, you know, students being out, students needing to follow COVID protocols. So they have upped that from 10% to 20%, which is 36 absences. That's a lot of absences. But again, I think we understand the reasoning that we're looking for some flexibility with our accountability measures. There's emergency educator licenses, which, again, there was very little waiver process other than from, for some particular areas, but they have waived that through 2023. So as you hire educators, I think they're backed up, you know, many of them with, you know, the tests that they're doing, the courses people are able to take, and they're understanding that balance. And I'll end on a happy note. We talked at our last meeting about safety and security. You had trainings here in your school. I'm sure your children came home and talked about it. Actually, I'm sorry, your teachers had the training. We're following through with drills. But our teachers, so that was on May 4th, which was your professional development day. And word has gotten back after talking with the principals, again, both the region, which did it earlier in April, the two elementary schools, which did it on May 4th, and Synergy did an excellent job. We all attended it. We took part in the drills. And you know it was interesting that I have to say this, not that I want to bring up Buffalo, but when you talk about supermarket, you know, people out shopping. And really, what hit me was Synergy Director talking to us and saying, what we're teaching you, what we're teaching our children, is, can be used anywhere, whether it's a church, you know, whether it's, unfortunately, a mall, a supermarket, a movie theater, we can, excuse me, name the places. And we're talking about those kind of skills that can be used.
And it focuses on process versus place, right? So that's, so it's not your classroom. It's the process of wherever you are, which I think helps settle nerves a little bit when our staff are going through it because they know it's not just because they work here, it's because it's something they can use wherever they are in life.
And that certainly crossed my mind in thinking about even hearing some of the survivors talk about what they did to survive. So again, so we're moving towards the end of the year. I think we've got a lot going on, and we're certainly accomplishing a lot of the things that we talked about, surprisingly, with everything that's come our way. And that is my report.
Thank you, Kathy. Yeah, thank you. Questions from committee members? All right, well, thank you, Kathy, and thank you in advance to the advisors from the Board of Health that have really steered us every step of the way as they continue to advise the district. So thank you. All right, Dr. Reindman, next up is the principal's report.
Thank you. Good evening. Welcome back into Chickering. Good to see everyone. My principal's report is included in the packet. I'll give a few highlights, and then it looks like we're circling back to the school improvement plan later, so I'll breeze through that part very quickly now. Like Kathy started with, we had Teacher Appreciation Week last week, and it was a huge hit. We had letters from our students. We had Wear Your Teacher's Favorite Color Day and an ice cream truck on professional development before we came in to practice lockdown. So we tried to sweeten the day a little bit with that. Very appreciated. We also had a May Day event, which, in at least the 20 years since we've opened this building, we haven't done a May Day event. So we're very excited. I asked Dan Davis and Julie Wodling to create something for us, and it was magical. Our second and third graders performed with the make-hole, and we had a make-hole and the ribbons, and the kids danced. And then we had boat dances in the middle and interactive dance where the kids started with their partners and then went out and brought audience members. And the day was beautiful, and it was just, it was just magical. It's a really nice event. We're hoping to do it with the whole school next year. And then we followed it about an hour later with a fire drill. Sorry. I'd get another, another drill for us. The school improvement plan is here. We'll talk about that more in a minute. We have some handbook edits. They are very minor before you go through a change next year, where all four student, family handbooks, excuse me, will be in the same format. So these are some minor edits and some cleaning up for pieces we just keep tacking on. So those will be pretty straightforward, I think. We are in the throes of MCAS testing. So fifth grade had their first day of math today. They'll have their second day of math tomorrow. And then next Monday, Tuesday, the science, technology, and engineering. The window for MCAS testing ends the end of May. So one of the things that we were reflecting on this morning was, when we made the plan, we weren't thinking about the fact if someone contracts COVID next week, there's no room for makeup in terms of when the window closes. So unless the commissioner extends the window, which they could, that may be part of our results, is that we had absences to COVID that we couldn't do anything about, can't give the tests remotely this year. We did last year, but not this year. We are getting ready. Student placement is underway, the magic soup of student placement. And with that Step Up Day, June 15th, another tradition of Chickering. So on that, on Step Up Day, we have all of our first graders, for example, go and meet all of next year's second grade teachers. So they don't find out their classroom placement, but they get to hear about second grade, meet the teachers, get some of the jitters out a little bit, and then return to their own classrooms, intentional days in the morning. So we've got some worries that come up. We've got the data to iron those out. We are setting up for our fifth grade celebration on June 17th, that Friday. And then Monday, excuse me, Tuesday, Wednesday, the following week, looking to do some festable projects and our OB joyful celebration on the last day. So a lot planned as we come racing through the curriculum and teaching. The Teachers College continues. And we have five educators that are going to attend this summer. Very excited for that. And then the last section is personnel. You know, Ms. Riordan is retiring. I think she cried for every teacher appreciation card she got. They were beautiful cards. Mrs. Gillis, who taught PE a number of years ago, is returning to also be a phys ed teacher, so she and Mr. Frazier will man that department. Ms. McConnell, you might know as Ms. Cronin, is returning from her maternity leave to third grade. Ms. Merritt will be taking a maternity leave next year. And then I've listed off in a very elaborate paragraph here of the sections that we'll have for next year. Big excitement. We'll have four sections of kindergarten. We have 66 kiddos registered. Our first grade will pop up to five sections. Second grade will have four. Third grade will have five, because the current second grade has five. And then fourth and fifth will all have four sections. Doing lots of moving, lots of excitement here this summer with new floors, hopefully, on the wing, the K wing. So we're, we have a lot going on here. Happy to answer any questions you need.
Can I just ask a quick question? So a bunch of people went to the reading workshop training before, and this was kind of like the first year, right, rolling out? Like, how is it going?
Fabulous question. It's going remarkably well, right? Learning a new curriculum and teaching it at the same time, as you know, is such a challenge. Priscilla Stephon has been the glue that's held it all together for us. She's helped to coach the teachers as they preview a unit of study. She's taken our Empowering Writing Unit curriculums and woven it in, so we have much more integrated reading and writing experiences, super efficient, and uses this, our writing program that works beautifully for the materials that we work with. We have sampled in most of the grade levels, two units of study. The younger grades, K1 and 2, have all done two. 3, 4, and 5 have, will have tackled three units of study in the year, which is way more than we expected. We hoped for everyone to do one. And here we are, of course, being Chickering and overachieving as we get through. Part of the challenge has been cleaning out our libraries. That's easy. Replacing them with high-quality, appropriate text. Challenging finding the right books. It's a huge purchase, right? It takes five years to bring your building up to that level. So filling classroom libraries appropriately and then having materials to teach. So we've pinched it in a few places. We've managed to get most of what we were hoping to get for materials. So we're looking for, working with Dawn and back on some grant money to boost up those purchases this summer. So on we go.
I don't know if, I don't know if it's new or old, but the, speaking from watching my son, like, he's fallen in love again with reading this year because of the book clubs. Like, that's been really awesome because he was kind of like uninterested before, and now it's like, reading is fun because we're reading these, like, books in groups and with partners. It's really nice. So bravo.
Books, right, we're in book club, we read now even. Oh, that's great, thank you.
Other questions? So Deb, just to confirm, you mentioned four sections for kindergarten of the incoming class, as far as we know right now, 66 students. The other grades, are they maintaining kind of their same number of sections based on?
Great question, and I did fly through, so I apologize. In, currently in kindergarten, we have four sections, and we have eight new students registered already. The kindergarten classes are at 20, 21, and 22. And our school committee policy is 17 to 22 for class size, so we need to add a fifth section. So that's where we're picking up the extra section in first. Second grade has four sections now, excuse me, has five sections now. And so that grade will move up. The current first grade, which has four, will then stay at five. So we're adding a section at second. No, I've done that backwards, I'm so sorry. We're four in first grade right now. That will be four in second grade next year. Second grade, which is the bigger class, goes to third. So we have to move teachers around. So we've had, Christian Kreitler is moving from fourth grade to third. Lorette Oren is moving from second to first. And Donna Power and Jim Cohane are moving from fifth to fourth. And we'll have one long-term sub, which would be the Meredith Merritt, which is in fifth grade right now as a whole. So we haven't filled that long-term sub position yet.
So we had five fifth grades, so we only have four fifth grades. So that's how you're getting the extra section to go down.
Got it, got it.
Thank you.
In other words, all of the grades that are, you know, everybody's obviously moving up a year. Nobody's losing sections where, you know, you have.
Right, right.
We're not losing any teachers.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, exactly. That's what I.
So you'll see the four or five continue to go with the cohorts, which is what we see all the time at Pine Hill. We're usually a little more stable here, but there are differences in the grades that are causing that. Three in kindergarten one year, you know, the worst. Three usually is only kindergarten.
Yes.
Then it builds up. But you're four sections, five sections. Usually probably depends on that, the census for that year and, you know, more dependent on the move-ins.
Right. And so that's something we continue to monitor as we go. And if we find that we're bumping up above the limit, that's something we need to add.
Like this year, we added two, two members post-budget, two members, two staff members, yes, post-budget. So I think that's the beauty of our projections. We, you know, we're looking at the in-migration, out-migration at both over a three-year average and a one-year average, so that you can see the ranges. And that usually gives us a guide. Doesn't always land that way, but at least gives us a good guide of what may happen. I think we're coming out of a, you know, I think it's a different real estate market now. I think it's active. But I think, if I think about the houses I've seen turnover, they're coming in with no kids or kids under preschool. In the typical days, families are in here and they already had kids in elementary. So it'll be interesting to see then if we see as much in-migration once you get into the grade levels like we used to see. So see if it impacts our three-year project, three- and one-year projections moving forward.
I mean, I just think we really pride ourselves on those small class sizes, and it's so beneficial for the kids and the teachers too, I hope. So I know it's important for a lot of families to make sure that we maintain that. Any other questions, girls? Great, thanks, Dr. Reindman. We'll be back to you momentarily. But next, we'll go to Dawn for the warrant report.
Warrant report. So you have your monthly report of warrants that have been processed and signed by Mr. Healy since the last time you met. So I do have to thank Mark for being so conscientious and always going to Town Hall. He's agreed to train whoever the new signer is going to be. It'd be helpful if we know who that's going to be before your June meeting, though, because every two weeks, we take warrants over there, and they do sort of hold them for check-writing purposes or check mailing purposes. So if you just know who may want to get trained, Mark's willing to go over there. I think the next set's going over, actually.
Yeah, I just signed today.
Yeah, but it was from before. So we'll have a set ready to go like next week.
Great. So I mean, anyone who's looking for that type of exciting opportunity.
Interesting, actually. It very much is. You get to see every dime that's spent in the district at Chickering anyway. And it's also pretty easy and straightforward once you go, once. And I live within walking distance, so that's also always made it easier, too.
Yeah, well, anyone who would like to volunteer, feel free to.
I will if nobody is like, you know, feeling really passionate about taking it on. I'm happy to take it on, only if you train me.
Are you able, are you able to go during office hours?
Yeah.
Don't they're open?
Yes.
Okay, because that's the, that's sort of the key thing.
Yeah, I've had a life changer, so yes, I am now available.
Excellent. And then I'm also willing to sort of train, too. So always feel free. I think we've met before, but just reach out and I can, I can go over this with you. So thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Liz, for allowing us to stop there. And thank you, Mark, for walking Liz through what she needs to know. Check? No pun intended.
All right. So moving on to the monthly financial report. So it's an odd date, May 9th, but I wanted to be processed payroll and some warrants, so I wanted to make sure you had the most up-to-date actuals that I could provide. And as we've continued to do, the bold information is new information since your last report, so I have two things to highlight. As we mentioned, we threw all of the expenses in your general fund for all the positions we added, including the ones that we were piloting, knowing that we had grant funding to cover, though. So seeing that we are getting close to the year and we are still running a negative variance, we are allocating the cost of the piloted math and SEL specialist to grants. So we're using some ESER and some special ed grants. And we're pulling educational assistance off of our general fund. That's the easiest position to transfer over to grants for many reasons. So you'll see now there's quite a large positive variance in your educational assistant line items because we pulled that money out. But it helps offset your very large number in teacher, classroom, and specialist. So we did take care of that since your, since your last meeting. The other change since we last met, we are continuing to see additional out-of-district placements, both 45-day placements and permanent placements. So we are showing a larger negative variance in that line item than we had before. I will provide you with sort of a recap of our placements based on what we budgeted versus where we ended up and show you sort of the ins and outs so you better understand what's happened during the year at your June meeting. Because I will say there's still things in fluctuation right now. And so I don't have everything finalized, but I will have that for June for you. And that'll give us a sense of where we're sort of poised as we enter into fiscal year '23. And I will also, in June, provide you with the ESER grants that we've spent to date. And just a quick synopsis, we pretty much have used our ESER 1 and ESER 2 and just probably half of our ESER 3. But I'll give you an update as to what we used each of those four and show you what we have left that we'll be able to move into fiscal year '23 with.
Excellent, thank you, Dawn. Questions, comments?
Is there any sort of trend with the out-of-district uptick that you can detect?
You know, I think a lot of it is, I will say, it's like SEL, socially emotional, you know, just coping mechanisms is what we're seeing. We, I think we've done a great job of building our programs throughout the K-12, but it's usually not the educational piece. And so that, that's what I'm seeing for those students that are going. So a forty-five day placement is usually when someone's like, they're struggling here and we go and have them evaluated. So we've been seeing more of those. Some of them come back and some of them that are, you know, recommended to go to a different placement. It doesn't mean they'll be out long-term. It just may be a year and then maybe they'll come back to us, so. But I think that's what we're seeing a little bit more of than language-based or, you know, some of the other placements that we used to see prior to putting our, our programs in place in districts.
Thank you. Other questions, Scott? All right. Thank you very much, Dawn. All right. So I think does that bring us to the proposed changes to the handbook, our first read?
Excellent.
Deb, back to you.
All right. Thank you. Short and sweet. So we're adding, the way this is set up, the current text is in italic and the changes are in bold. So in our request for translation, we're adding in, we'd like to add in Russian and Mandarin, which is what we've done with our registration forms as well. Very excited with our online registration that Steve Hart helped to patch. And now Anthony Rotocco is taking in and we're adding in so that we'll register directly to Aspen instead of you typing everything in and then the office staff reloading it into Aspen. This way, your work will go right into Aspen, so that's all. The registration materials will be available in all four languages, so we wanted to include that the handbook would be as well. The bus expectations, it talks about the way you're always called back and informed usually the same day. We're going to give ourselves a little wiggle room with as soon as possible. And you may be called. We don't call for every turn. We talk to every student who might hop off the bus. We figure perhaps thinking just a reset. So they may come home and say, oh, Dr. Reinem, don't we not to jump from the top step of the bus? And I may not have called you. So just giving ourselves some wiggle room in there. The second section about the bus transportation, we don't put it in the Dover Sherbin press anymore. It's just on the school website.
And did I suggest you just put a period after school opens? Because then it's, we say website twice. Publish on the, the week before school opens, period.
Okay. Gotcha. Thank you, Dawn.
And we've sent emails out to everyone alerting that it's there.
Right.
It buzzes through Denver. And then the last one was taking, we had three or four sections about being dismissed and arriving and being tardy and notifying, so we drew them all up into one with all of the correct times. Really exciting. So school opens at seven thirty-five. Students can consider tardy after seven fifty. Children arriving after that time, we check into the office. Please review the day plans with your child before they leave for school. And if child's not taking the assigned bus transportation home, there's a set of options that we ask that you do. And we also specify not to email the teacher. Because if the teacher isn't in that day or just doesn't have time to check his or her email, your request for a change would get lost, so they have need to go through the office. And the last piece is not dismissing in the last forty-five minutes of the day. There's quite a bit of chaos that happens. And so having parents come in with the buses and the preschool dismissal and everyone leaving, we just ask that they give us that buck for forty-five minutes, so. There it is. And then the other piece is COVID silver lining. If you're coming to pick your child up, you have two options. You can park and walk in to the office and ask for them to be dismissed, or you can pull up to the curb and call us and we'll bring your child up to you, which is especially helpful if you have a little one who's napping in the car. Because you know that second and third kid never gets a real nap. So another option, which we started during COVID and realized that helped some families quite a bit, so.
And can, can I add? We had discussion, you know, with our principals and we've been actually talking about it this year. So you have four schools, and again, I'm not talking about procedures or protocols that are particular to Pine Hill or Chikering, the middle school and the high school. But when you look at a best practice, we were talking about, and I'm just saying, the month of March, working with Stonem, Chandler, and Miller. We spoke to attorney Colby Brunt, who's been dealing with us this year with student issues, on bringing together, you know, through your principals, it could be your assistant principals, it could be other leaders in the district, whoever the superintendent and her team decides. Come together and review some of the changes, mass general laws, which obviously we have to change in every one of the handbooks. And it makes sense for families who kids go from the elementary to the middle to the high school, you know, to have some uniform policies. So I don't want to confuse that with protocols or procedures, but just important policies that are looked at every year. Your bullying policy by law has to be reviewed and adjusted, and that to me is the best practice. So that is something, as Principal Reineman has just said to you, these are changes. Region has made some small changes, Pine Hill, and they will come together and again, kind of formalize that, that template to be looked at.
Thank you. I think that makes great sense. Other questions or comments for this first read of these changes to the student handbook? One, one thing I just wanted to follow up on, on the bus expectations. I know, Deb, we've heard that this has been a bit of a problem area of late, even more so than usual. My assumption is, and correct me if I'm wrong, that if there is a serious problem on the bus, that yes, that would warrant a call and that you would want to do that in a timely fashion. Because presumably, to the degree that you need some parental support in modifying the behavior, striking while the iron is hot, if you will, is, is the best, you know, course. You want parents to be able to kind of take up the issue while it's fresh in the child's mind and they can have a discussion that complements what you're doing. But is, is that all still the intent here?
Absolutely. It is, yeah. We are much more effective when we can intervene quickly throughout the school, so often if there's a, always if there's a significant event, there's a conversation with the children, often the teachers are involved and phone calls. Sometimes the child gets to call home with us. So there's, I don't know, we, not, very little has risen to a significant level this year, which is interesting, because we've written in our newsletters about the bus behavior, and a lot of it is just they're loud and they're not sitting down and they're trying to climb over the seat. And, and all behaviors we generally see with our kindergarteners as they learn the culture of how to ride the bus safely, it's just we lost, that's one of the things we lost in COVID, right? Was when you had assigned seats, couldn't go anywhere. There was no swi, there's still no swapping, but there was very, and you were children on the bus. You were sitting with your sibling probably instead of your friends. So it's like in the classroom, they didn't have to share crayons or school supplies last year. And this year we do. So there's a whole new piece to, no, no, make, can I borrow the red, Dawn? Versus, you know, give me the red. So it's just that piece of relearning some of the cultures. So the buses, one of the things too that's interesting is that the drivers can't know the kids' names as well with the masks, especially the little ones, so that was harder. It was hard for everyone to hear. The drivers know just about everyone's name now. We have a couple of new drivers, but, so they've known the kids' names. There's just a much more feel like it used to be on the bus, so it's, it's come down quite a bit. I guess significant events get very quick reaction.
Speaking of the way things used to be on the bus.
Yes.
Maybe we're not there yet, but do we anticipate being able to return to the world at some point at least where kids can go home with a friend on the bus or?
That'll probably happen about the time we change cafeteria tables back.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll look at bus capacity. So, you know, we've, we have pulled that back from Pine Hill permanently because it just, there's not room to be able to, you can't have a whole birthday party, go home. So I'm not sure. So that was a request from Conley on their part as to what their buses could handle pupil-wise and also for the staff, so. But speaking of appreciation, I, I do have to shout out to our bus drivers. We've been incredibly fortunate to share, if you listen to surrounding districts. And I'm just so pleased to have Conley on our side. They have worked tirelessly to make sure. We've had a few days where we've had one or both ways of a bus maybe not covered, but considering we have nineteen buses to have, you know, one occupy kind of my both hands over the whole year where we haven't been able to provide bus service, we're, it's been extremely lucky and we, they're just, they're just great people. They love our kids and they take care of them, and I think we, as parents, we should all be feel comfortable knowing that they're in good hands and they're just so dependable. So I, I shout out to Conley and all of our incredible bus drivers. It's been a tough year, but they've stuck it out with us.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
Right. Anything else on the handbook? So we'll return to this for a second read and to vote on these changes at our next meeting. All right. That brings us to an update on the progress with the school improvement plan.
Yes, thank you. I have a, we have a fantastic school advisory council this year. We have some very deep and passionate discussion, which is exciting. It's been interesting. So I want to thank Erica Alders, George Budino, and Rob Andrews, Colleen Burton, who's our school community liaison, Bob Cox, who's our community representative, Ally Neteary, who's one of our third grade teachers, Nisha Hockman, who's one of our occupational therapists, and Allison Parker, who's one of our kindergarten teachers. And all three teachers are new to the SAC this year, so they've had a very interesting year. We had them do a survey of our staff in response to the big question that the SAC raised, which was what have we lost in the COVID years and what can we do about it? So they put together a survey and gathered data from staff that we went through a couple of meetings ago. And we've been working on this plan for several months. And I think we're, we're feeling pretty solid about the pieces, so I'm excited to share them with you. We are using another exciting district-wide, we're all using the same format for our school improvement plan, which will only be exciting for Mark, who, when he goes to see the next one, he'll call it. We'll see how the book goes. How, the performance are the same, and then the criteria for how we're putting it together works out. So our first goal is linked to the district goal, which is to continue to refine our multi-tiered system of support, our MTSS support, to ensure that all students have access to differentiated instruction, targeted interventions, and evidence-based resources to support their academic, social, and emotional development. It's a huge goal. And the trick was to figure out which piece of that we were going to really focus on. So in our goals and action steps in the plan, you'll see that we have looked to identify and address any gaps. The evidence effectiveness needs to be fleshed out a little bit more, but we do that teacher survey. We're doing some academic and SEL planning, differentiated materials, and then we're looking to pilot an anti-bullying curriculum called Fly By. Second step talks about using data in term, in all of our meetings, looking at students who need intervention, students who have graduated from that intervention, students who are ready for more. So how do we use that data? We built a masterful structure this year that our coaches helped to run, and then our teacher leaders will be running at grade levels this year moving forward. So they learn the, the tools for gathering data and then how we use it to affect instruction. We'll continue to look at process and protocols. And then the last one, it says this year, next year, is to identify the priority standards and skills in each curriculum area. And that leads eventually to a report card review, which is a big, a big piece to work with. And we've started conversations with Pine Hill, looking at having a common report card across the two schools. So probably a little optimistic to think that we can do that in the first year, but who knows? We'll see. See, but that's all part of that MTSS piece. The second one is to continue our implementation of Teachers College, so year two of five. And that's mapped out with more teachers attending the professional development. Moving forward, the focus this year was on mini lessons. And then the next step is, sorry, differentiated in, I'm sorry, I can't remember where I'm looking for.
Confering? Small groups?
Small groups. Thank you. I thought I was, I was looking for another word for small groups. Confering. Thank you, Deb. So focus lessons this year and then conferring as part of the Reader's Workshop model for next year. So each year we'll add on more factors and pieces to that. That is, yeah, just like that. And then the last one is to continue to foster school community free from bias and discrimination, encourage a sense of belonging, and equitable outcome for all Dover students through communication, curriculum review, and policy review. Another big one. So that includes the findings from the DS Equity Audit and implementing those over, I imagine, a number of years. But deciding which piece of that, once we have those results, we're going to take, address next year. The other piece is inclusive communication, one of my pet projects, and looking at how do we engage our families and how do we build a two-way communication system with our families versus a one-way communication. So the, I'm excited to see the current results in that piece. And then bringing back principals' coffees or whatever we decide to call them, so we can have in-person meetings with families and guardians, parents and guardians, looking at doing that structure so that you might have it Wednesday mornings in school and then Thursday, late afternoon, virtually. So the same piece twice. We'll see how it goes. Whenever we have an evening meeting, it's, I wish it was during the day. It's just impossible to catch everyone, but I think we set the schedule out early with the dates and the possible topics. Hopefully it'll get onto people's calendars and we'll have a, a good participation. I don't anticipate doing something like that hybrid, but we'll see. There's lots short. And then the last piece that is in there as a placeholder for us is, and how does challenge success fit in here? It's woven through everything that we do and the questions from SAC and maybe for you is how do, do we need that as another stand-on piece or do we, is that part of the breathing document? Big questions, lots of information. I mean, I probably should have paused after you told me the question. Sorry.
I also want to thank Dr. Reineman. She had worked with our assistant principal, Anna Hurley. We have a communications subgroup, so we looked again at templates. So when you look at the school improvement plan for Chikering, it mirrors, again, different goals, different objectives. What's happening at Pine Hill, the middle school and the high school, which were presented the other evening at the region and at the Sherbin School Committee meetings, so she did a good job.
Thank you. Questions or comments regarding the school improvement plan?
I have a question about the coaches.
Yes.
So the structure of the coaching that's being, that's in place this year, is that expected to continue next year? Is there sort of more of a fluid, is that sort of still a fluid situation where, seeing where they fit in?
That's a great question. So each school, Pine Hill and Chikering, has had their own literacy specialists for a number of years. And Chikering longer than Pine Hill. And so we're very excited to see how each of those people, so for us, Ms. Steffan, can work with classroom teachers and students to build their capacity and skills in teaching and learning. And then late in the summer, we discovered an application for our ESER money was to hire coaches. So we have a math specialist, Lindsay Weiner, that we share with Pine Hill, and our SEL coach, Les Campbell, that we share as well. And then figuring out how does that all fit into the big picture? And so we're very excited as they've grown as a team to figure out how to support teachers and not all land perhaps in second grade on Tuesday, but instead disperse their skills. And then there's pieces where there's a critical need, right? There's a, the beginning of the year math assessments. The ones for everyday math are brutal, right? They're long, they don't give us a lot of information. What can we do instead? So Lindsay worked with our teachers very quickly early in the year to look at how do we, what do we need to know to get started?
Right.
Ms. Campbell has been in classrooms, working with lessons on sharing, lessons to be a good friend. She's very busy, right? Some anti-bullying lessons as she's gone in and perhaps co-taught a lesson with someone and then follows up a couple of days later with what's the next lesson, what do you want to do next? So it is, it's been fluid as the years gone on. I think we've definitely felt a nice rhythm. The coaches are planning a launch guide for all of September, which is launching all of the parts of responsive classroom, SEL supports, math, academic supports, win groups, just so that we all launch at both schools. They're going to match for the start of September. So we're very excited for that.
Great.
I was just reading a report and I can't tell you what it is. I'm sorry. I just was reading it. And it talked about the pandemic, loss of learning, you know, are there going to be major changes in the way that we educate our students? And one of the biggest findings was about the coaching model. And, you know, there were many urban districts that have done coaching for a while. Those are usually your lead teachers, your veteran teachers, you know, more established, and how they can support, it could be a new classroom teacher or counselor. And it was amazing that that's where they were really seeing growth and support, so. You've done a great job with that, yeah.
So I asked them, stop at Reineman for.
Yeah. You're talking, the data collection piece is like my, like favorite stuff. I forget what program you said. Is, is there like a database that you're using? I'm just kind of curious because like the win groups are awesome, but it's nice to know if they're working or not. And is the same kid showing up to like the same win group every other year, like, so that you can share the data? Like, is that what you're talking about? Yeah.
So we've purchased Panorama.
That's what it was. Yeah.
So in depth is more of an extra than I wanted, but. But it's, it's worked out really well. Our coaches have been training folks on how to load that data. And it's interfaces with Aspen, which is our student information system, so that if we decide that we want to take a deep dive and look at Liz Grossman, it can load in and tell us when you were absent. It can tell us, like the amount of data that's in, what win groups you're in. We have data for this year. So year over year, we'll be able to map. And it's pre-K to 12.
Yeah, it's really brilliant.
So it's going to fill that, that motive that we jump when we go from fifth to sixth, where we need to launch them. We have so much information about them and how do we carry that forward? So I think Panorama is going to help with that as well.
And just to clarify, like, data doesn't mean more testing or anything. It's just, there's lots of ways to collect data and and then use that to really get to know a kid even better.
Sure. So it could be an IXL quiz. It could be a formative assessment. It could be as I'm sitting and reading with you, I'm taking a running record and noting your fluency and I can put that data in as well. So you can track over time.
Devils, F and P. So all of the benchmarking that had been done and kept in beautiful colored spreadsheets are now in one place.
Yeah.
And then they're working across both elementary schools for some uniformity, but also throughout the middle school too. So that notes coming from student support team meetings or grade level meetings, intervention meetings, are carrying the same kind of information from the elementary to the middle and then from the middle and the high school. So we can see as students matriculate, for example, from fifth grade to sixth grade, they are coming up and they might need support in these areas because they've had it this many times in fifth grade or fourth grade.
And so you're hoping to start that next year?
It's running now.
So you'll see that Panorama was one of the expenses that we put, use SRR for because it came sort of after the budget process. And so we, all three districts use SRR to pay for their participation in Panorama for this year. And we've held money for next year too, just to sort of try it out. It's a, not expensive, but it is an investment. So that we have more data, I think, we'll be rolling out next year to let everyone sort of see what its strengths are. And then we'll work it into the fiscal year '24 budget as an ongoing expense.
Maybe we can put that on the school committee agenda for next fall. The presentation about the sort of data.
Yeah, that's, we have sorted that on the plan, probably for a joint so that everyone can see it.
We didn't make it this year, so we've carried it over.
Yeah. We'll have more stuff, right, to be able to show.
I think the other piece of it too is we did some training with our curriculum leaders, PLC leaders, department chairs, last August around Panorama and IXL. And it's one thing to sit there and listen to a three-hour webinar and then go in and do, you know, the sandbox and play with it. But then the school year starts and everything is due, you know, that moment and everyone's busy supporting students, you know, dealing with bus issues. So I think we're going to have to circle back and do kind of another round. But what's nice is that our, our coaches, our specialists at the middle school have been living it all year. So they have so much of their own expertise from the perspective of our schools that they can add that flavor to.
It's really exciting.
I think it's, I think it's really valuable in being able to see this cohort that's gone through two years, three years of this pandemic, sort of seeing what their needs might be. And I love the K to 12 aspect of it for the support of these students. So that's great.
A quick anecdote from the middle school, if I may just think up for a moment, which was I was meeting with the academic specialist from the middle school today. And she said, I had a teacher write me an email and she was just so excited because she viewed the growth in reading and writing that her students experienced from September to now. And it was like 300 points, which is three grade levels.
Right.
That she and a special education teacher who were co-teaching together got that class to that much growth. And she was just taken aback by the value of data and specificity of standards and being able to track that information.
Yeah, it's one thing to like feel like your students have grown a lot and then it's another thing to like see it in hard numbers on, on paper. It's really awesome.
Yeah. So it's great.
And I'd just like to add, I think that a consistent school improvement plan structure, like you mentioned, Dr. Reineman, is helpful, of course, to any school committee member, but also to parents and administrators and the district, to teachers. I just feel like it creates this like smooth entry point for anyone to try to understand that pre-K through 12 progression and other things. You know, in addition to challenge success, I wondered too if we'd ask some of the portrait competencies, where are those opportunities fed with this?
Yes.
That's one of the things we're going to do this summer, the leadership retreat. And then with the curriculum leaders is, is taking Portrait of a Graduate, Challenge Success, our DEI work, you know, and all of our academic pieces and saying, you know, if you've got rid of all the names and all the lingo that goes with it, what are the commonalities that it boils down to and making those our targets?
Yeah.
Great.
That's great. Authentic learning, relationships. You won't have to interpret edgy jargon anymore.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Well, thank you, Dr. Reineman.
Certainly.
Okay, so that brings us to the consent agenda, which consists of our May, or sorry, March 10th, 2022 meeting minutes. Are there any comments or questions on those before we entertain a motion? All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Colleen Burke, so moved.
Thanks, Colleen. Second? Any discussion? All right, all in favor? All right, the motion carries. Thank you. That's easier than doing a roll call, isn't it? All right, so we also have here the regional school committee minutes of February 16th and the Sherbin School Committee meeting minutes of February 8th and March 15th for members' information. And we have one last item before we adjourn this evening. Somewhat vaguely titled here, recognition. And this has to do with Mark Healy. So I would like to take this moment to recognize our esteemed colleague who has graciously dedicated his time and considerable talents to serving on the Dover School Committee for the last three years. From volunteering on the contract negotiating team to steering multiple searches for both building and district leadership, to signing warrants at the townhouse. Mark has been a valued contributor, a consummate professional with a consistently thoughtful approach and kind manner and a passionate advocate for kids. And so, Mark, we thank you for your service and we wish you the very best in the next step of your journey.
Thank you very much. Could I say something quickly?
Please.
It has been an honor, absolutely. Many of you know I work in Teach and Need them. I'm an administrator there. And some people over there say, oh, my gosh, don't you have enough during the day? To like, why do you go back for more at night? But I found that, you know, this has opened my eyes to the intense thought that goes into schools from the community perspective. And I couldn't surround myself with harderworking, more intelligent people than what we have on this board. And I look forward to the future of the school committee. I know that we're also seeking ways to have more of those stakeholder perspectives brought in to the work that we do and the conversations we have at tables here. So I look forward to the next few years as well as a community member.
Well, thank you, Mark. This is for you.
This is your apple.
Ah, thank you. Thank you.
We'll spoil the surprise for the rest of you.
That's okay.
Let us know if you have to work for it.
Oh, gorgeous.
Thank you.
Well deserved. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll miss you on this committee, that's for sure.
The hardest part was when we were on Zoom and knowing who's going to move first.
We just had our, yeah.
We rolled the punches, right?
Absolutely.
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn? You should do the honor, Mark.
Oh.
Yeah.
Mark Healy's so moved.
All in favor? Well, thank you, everyone. It's our meeting this evening.